June 25, 2020. I'd like to ask Danny Lance, Pastor Trulife Church and one of our police chaplains if he would lead us in our invocation and our pledge if everyone will stand.
Heavenly Father, first of all, we say thank you for everything, every good thing in our life because it all comes from you. We thank you, Lord, for these leaders of our community that have, that do their very best in what are very much challenging times. Lord, tonight, we ask for wisdom, just as Solomon prayed, wisdom to lead your people. I ask, Lord, that they would have compassion for the people they are leading as well as have the courage to make decisions even when they're difficult decisions. We ask for your leading. We ask for your guidance and we ask that the city would come together in unity in a time that there is so much divisiveness because, Lord, you are the one that can unify us. And so we ask that, in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lance. Let me go ahead and mention, as everyone is aware, we're still conducting our meetings via electronic means via Governor Lee's newest executive order number 34, which will remain in effect until the end of June, which would be, this would be our last meeting. I don't believe there's any intentions for that to be reextended, but we will, we will see, but this may be our last virtual meeting.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor. And this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Executive Order 16, which was subsequently extended by Executive Order 34. This body has made a determination that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community and anyone participating here. And so we want the minutes, Ms. Middleton, to reflect that a determination by this body has been made in light of the Governor Lee's executive order as dealing with the state of emergency from the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Litchford. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Cagle?
Here.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Here.
Councilmember Witt?
Here.
City Manager Dorsey?
Here.
City Attorney Litchford?
Here.
All right, we'll move into the item four, the consent agenda. This will be the approval of the minutes for June 5, 2020 budget workshop, the minutes of June 11, 2020 council meeting, the April 20, 2020 financial statement, and lastly, the May 2020 financial statement. Do we entertain a motion for this consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. I will move to item five, communications from citizens. As we have done in most of them since March, there is no opportunity for live citizen comment during the meeting. Any citizen desiring to address the city has an opportunity to submit their comments via email to mayor@eastridgetn.gov. And that was from noon Wednesday, the 24th, 2020 through noon Thursday, the 25th today. Please keep in mind that any citizen or business owner that may contact the city, city council members, city manager, or myself at any point in time. There was no citizen communications during this period, so we will then move on into item six, communications from council members. Let's start on this side. Cagle?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank Gary and Tim down at Torina for keeping the arena sanitized and COVID-19 proof down there Saturday because they've done an excellent job. Everybody talked about it. The second thing is, I had a citizen to call me about the East Ridge Ball League. They had to go to Rossville Fields to play another East Ridge team. And they were wondering why, with the amount of fields we've got down here, why two East Ridge teams would have to go to Rossville to play each other. I presented the question, so...
Well, obviously, I don't know off the top of my head, but I will find out.
Yeah, Adam's not here. I was gonna ask him, so...
Yeah, we have limited, obviously, today. What do you know?
Oh, this was league play.
I don't know. We'll find out.
Sorry, I'm just making a note. Anything else, Mr. Cagle?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Witt?
I'm gonna bring up the census again. I had a citizen that contacted me, and I had put this on Facebook. The Census Bureau is rolling out a household pulse survey to gauge the COVID-19 impact. Not everybody is getting that, but apparently one of our citizens did get it. It's quite lengthy in what the questions that they ask you, but it is strictly voluntary. It's not the same as the census that is mandatory. It's law. But this one is voluntary, so if you're willing to fill it out, that's great. But she did fill it out, but she wanted to let me know that she was one of the citizens that received it. So it's called the Household Pulse Survey, and she got hers through email, okay? And Tennessee has done 61.2%, but East Ridge has at least done 63%. So if you haven't filled out that census, please do. It's very important for funding.
Yes, yes, it is. Still nice to see we're, we're leading the state.
Well, we're higher than the state. We're not as high as a lot of places, but need to do better.
Anything else?
No.
I have nothing, ma'am.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
I have nothing.
Okay. So the one thing that I wanted to mention is I've got quite a few comments and questions about the tunnels. So I wanted just to kind of cover this. You know, the tunnels on US 41, which straddle East Ridge and Chattanooga, is actually property and responsibility of TDOT and not the city of East Ridge. We've had several concerned citizens and business owner reaching out to people here in City Hall and myself. City Manager Dorsey has already been in contact with TDOT concerning the lighting and other issues with the tunnel, and TDOT has provided him information, indicated that several of these items have been ordered and they're just waiting on delivery for them to begin the work. And their estimate is, for the delivery and installation, hopefully sometime by late July. Also, we found that there's gonna be some signalization and some low clearance notifications that's gonna be included in that, so we're really excited about that to try to prevent any more vehicle...
Yes.
Yes, sir.
They're looking into that. They're coming up with a plan for it. I don't know if they've ordered the things for that yet.
Oh, they're looking into it.
But I know they're looking into that plan to work on increasing the notification and the safety things dealing with the tunnels like we talked about.
Okay. So I wanted to mention that. I think that is all that I have at this time. So I will move to City Manager Dorsey.
Thank you. Just wanna start by thanking our sanitation crews for the excellent work they've been doing over the last couple of months. I'm pleased to say that as of now, all of the brush dealing with the storms and tornado has been picked up within the city of East Ridge, the city limits. We have been in touch with FEMA every week, talking about the documentation and paperwork and things we need to do towards that. We are still in the process of grinding up the brush, down at the brush pit at this point. But as of this week, we have started resuming our regular routes for brush and for junk. So we should be on the north side this week. So I just wanted to let our citizens know that, too. In addition, if you all remember, we talked a month or two ago about issues dealing with our comp time and our, our personal time off and where we were not following the ordinance and how we were handling personal time off for those after 2012. We, this last week, we paid off those employees that were over 320 hours to get that number legally down to 320, where by ordinance it's supposed to be. We have sent that, we have sent those payments out, as we had talked about, and we have started looking at what the next phase is that we need to do to, to help the employees. One thing I had mentioned earlier dealt, and I've talked with the employees about this, too, dealt with converting personal time off back to vacation and sick time. A lot of the employees in fire and police were very, were very positive with our talk dealing with this because some of them are concerned about making sure they have time for if they're sick or if they're injured or be able to have sick time to take care of their family and things of that nature. So they were very, very thankful that we were looking into that as well. I have just been playing with numbers, but I wanted to show council. We have been studying the other, what some of the other cities have been doing with vacation and sick time, and I just wanted to pass this out real quick. And Vice Mayor Hilton, I think I texted you a copy of this.
You did.
Basically, and like I said, this is not set in stone. We are just looking at ideas and ways to, to be able to help the employees with this because, like I said, right now, you have personal time off for your employees. Personal time off is for anything, whether you're sick, whether it's vacation, whether it's anything, you have to take out of the pot of just personal time off. Whenever they went to personal time off, which was back in the Stone Age, I don't know, you told me when it was, Nettles, Mike Nettles or something?
I think it was 2003.
So, well, it's not too stone. That's, that was earlier than that. So back then, you had like vacation, sick, and then you combine those numbers together to get a personal time off number because personal time's supposed to encompass everything. So what I've looked at with other municipalities is a lot of them give a, a sick day a month, basically, either 10 or 12 sick days a year. What I proposed was, if you look at this, and I'll make this available to employees starting tomorrow and talk to them some Monday to get some ideas from them and some feedback. What this does is it takes four days off of the personal time off, basically, for each of the categories, but it adds 12 sick days a year for these employees. So for instance, if you were here from one to three years and you had 16 personal days off, you would get 12 vacation, and then you'd have 12 sick. You'd have 24 days during the year to be able to use for sick and/or vacation, depending on what your needs are. The good thing about this is any sick time that you have, sick time does not get paid back, okay? That's vacation is used for vacation. Sick is a, a right that you have to, to be able to use sick time as a, I forgot the word I'm trying to use. It's not right. It's, it's not a property right. It's a real...
PTO?
Pardon me? I just couldn't think of what the word is. It's not a benefit, but it's, it's part of your, of what you get. I'll think of the word later. Sorry. But with that, there's no cap on sick time. So sick time can build up for these employees, and then if they do have a reason to be out for a few weeks or something else, they will have sick time in the bank that they can use to take off, and it doesn't affect their vacation column at all. So in a lot of cases, this is a, a good advantage for the employees. And for those that are here long-term, when you retire, TCRS lets you take sick time and add that to your service hours credit towards retirement. So that is a very big benefit that the, the city hasn't been able to take advantage of either. These are just numbers, like I said, that I have been looking at and playing with that we're gonna start discussions on to, to see what the employees think about being able to switch to something like this because I think this is a good benefit, a good way for the city to, to move forward with this. It gives them, like I said, some comfort knowing that their sick time that they will be able to have for when they really need it. It's no financial liability on the city for the sick time. So we think that's something that will, that's a very positive thing, that we just wanna talk to the, you know, the employees and show them where we are. And like I said, on this sheet, I showed where our proposed vacation sort of falls in line with what the other cities already have. But not every city was the same. So like, we have like one year, then one to three years, four to seven years, eight to 11. Other cities break it up a little differently, but if you pick a certain year, you can sort of see how it, how it flows through this. So this is just as far as I've gotten with it right now. I just wanted the council to know first before we go out and talk to some of the employees and, and make this public to, to see what they think of this and if we might need to fine tune this or whatever. I just wanna make sure council was aware of it. And does anybody have any questions? Otherwise...
This would put them on their, all employees the same on their sick leave, vacation, whatever you wanna call it, okay? Now, I'd like for you to go back and look at Resolution 2259, which was put in order at the same time that anybody hired in 2012 after. Does not have the same insurance that the ones prior to that when they turned 65.
This has nothing to do with insurance. This is only vacation and sick. I'm not even touching insurance.
This is a benefit that went along with, that they took away from the employees that when they went to the no cap on the sick leave and annual leave. I'd like for you to look at this resolution right here and add this insurance, give them the same benefits as hired after 212, employees prior to 212 got.
I have no idea what you're talking about, so I'd have to look into it. Oh, I see that, but I have no idea what you're talking about. So I'll have to look into it. Yes. Because there's a lot of ordinances and things that are not in the code.
Essentially, I believe that resolution is the one, we, we've had brief discussions about it, and that's something that we're looking at as we move forward into personnel. But that's currently, if you're hired prior to 2012 and you retire at 25, 30 years of service, then your single coverage is covered until you reach Medicare age. Once you were hired after 2012, that, yeah, that was removed.
Well, then that, that just means they made a change. When you make that change, you have to have a date where you start the new, the way the new things go. But that has nothing to do with my sick and vacation, though. That's in, that's totally separate issue that the council decided to change that benefit, it sounds like, in 2012.
I'm not gonna argue the point up here. I'll...
Okay.
Talk to you about it next week.
And I'll be happy to review that ordinance with you, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we will move into old business. Item A, ordinance number 1128. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the fiscal year 2020 operating budget, ordinance number 1105, for various revenues and expenditures and to designate a portion of the fund balance to be used.
All right, if you've looked at it, you'll notice on the general fund that if you go down and look, we had already, when we started the year last year, budgeted that we were gonna use 646,000 of our fund balance to help with the grants, the multimodal and the Pioneer's playground. We didn't use it for that. So what I did is I just lowered the amount in that line item to, to offset all the changes that I needed to make for the overtures that we did. So we really end up, we're gonna use less fund balance than we budgeted to use. We're gonna have more left because we didn't use it. So, but you can see, and it had to do with paying out the comp time. For extra expenditures, we've had some wrecks and stuff that we've had to spend out for repairs. The economic development, we've had legal expenses when you're doing incentive agreements and stuff, you're having to pay attorneys more for that, Mark Mametoff and, and the, you know, for all those agreements. So that's all reimbursable, but I had to adjust that number. And let's see, which was another one? But, but that explains them all if you've got any questions. And then in the sanitation fund, of course, we did the overtime. We had to adjust that because back in the fall, if you remember, everything was broke and they had to work longer, and then we purchased new vehicles. And then we had a fire, two fires. Robert has not had a good year, okay? It wasn't his fault, but Robert has not had a good year. So that, that just does all those adjustments. Y'all have any questions? I pick on him sometimes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for ordinance number 1128.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1128.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Chauncey. Do we have any questions, discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Ordinance number 1128 passed second and final reading. We'll move into item B, public hearing for ordinance number 1129. I will open this public hearing. This is concerning the fiscal year 2021 budget ordinance. I will hand it to City Manager Dorsey.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we are not taking questions live for, for this public hearing, so we afforded the citizens the same opportunity as we do for the, did for the citizens' comments. We had it, the comment period open from noon on Wednesday till noon today. Out of that, we got, we received one email with six questions from a Mr. Richard Cook. So I'm just gonna, if you don't mind, real quickly, I'm gonna read through the questions and give the, the answers for these questions. And I have Diane and I have Kenny back there to help me if I either misspeak or leave a fact out. All right, question one. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Richard Cook, who lives at 607 Marlboro Avenue, for the record. Question one was a general question. The 2019 general fund budget was 13.8 million. Their proposed fiscal '21 general fund budget is 15.75 million. There is a $2.2 million increase for operations. Can you explain the huge increase? Yes, as you remember, when we talked about some of these items in our workshop, one thing that has been included in our budget that was not in last year's is the money for the border region pass-through, which was a little over $2 million, I believe. So we, we show that as a revenue and as an expenditure going out, and the transfer goes out from the general fund for that to the economic development fund, and then that's dispersed to the developers and it goes to debt service as well. That's what the big difference was in the budget for number one. Number two, during a time when many citizens stressed codes enforcement and in a period of booming growth in the city, both commercially and residentially, how and why has the codes enforcement budget been slashed from 764,000 to 517,000? There's a couple of reasons for this. Number one, the assistant city manager position was moved from codes, as you know, over to administration. In addition to that, back in fiscal 19, because he's comparing fiscal 19 actuals to the upcoming budget, not this current budget that we're in now, but the upcoming budget. In addition, there was about $37,000 roughly of two pickup trucks that were bought back in fiscal 19. There's also a small decrease in the demolition line and the electrical contract services line in this year's budget as expenditures for right now. The demo cleanup was at 43,000 in 2019. I assume the AHO was busy that year. And as you know, we've had a few issues we've been working on, but some have been passed and they've been given extra time to get things done, so we haven't spent as much out of that line. We also moved the engineering services. If you remember, I talked about, we had a couple cost centers that only had one line in them. We had the one for elections that we moved into the council line we talked about. We also had one that was just engineering services and its own cost center. So we moved that up to the building and codes department, too. Back in 2019, I believe, they spent around $165,000 out of that line, and this year there's only 50,000 budgeted, so it's a, a decrease obviously of 111,000 there. And those went, you know, those were expenses dealing with drainage projects we had, multimodal, the projects that we have, and that's basically what all that expenditure was, I believe. Kenny is nodding yes. So that's what was going on with that. Number three, can you explain the increase in the mayor council budget, jumping from 2019 actual of $81,115 to the fiscal '21 request of 128,222? There's a couple items here. One was, I got little tabs. One was, we moved the election line from having its own cost center. We moved it up into mayor and council. And as I said, we have the cost here for this year, but whenever there's an election dealing with the judge and the court clerk, part of the election cost will go into their budget as well. So you have the cost where the actual expenditure occurs. In addition, we have, since 2019, we have more council members are utilizing the city's insurance program, so that is an increase. We also have $25,000 in here under special events citywide. It's a new line item that we have allocated right now for our centennial. For those that don't know, the city of East Ridge will be 100 years old on April 4, 2021. With that being Easter weekend, we are looking at having a centennial festival celebration. We don't know the proper, the, the best word for it yet, but some sort of centennial celebration the weekend of April 10, the very next weekend. So right now, we have $25,000 that we allocated for the city's centennial that is in the mayor council line. And last, we moved education support, and these are, these two are in italics, elections and educational support, which shows that we moved it from somewhere else. There's $2,000 in there. That's the money where the council will give, is it 500 to each of the schools, right? And like, usually go around and drop off the apps and usually go around and drop off the checks, or I got it backwards, one of the two, for the school. So that 2,000 was moved up into the, the mayor council budget. Number four, the grant fund had $249,000 in revenue for fiscal 19 actual and had expenditures of 689,000 for a deficit of 483. The grant fund request for 2021 is 43,500. Can you explain this? Yes. Part of the, the, the amount that was spent back in 2019 was for the multimodal right-of-way purchases. We had to use general fund money on that, and there was an interfund loan for that, and that has yet to be reimbursed by the state, correct, by TDOT? We're still waiting. That's some of that paperwork I know has been floating around that they've been trying to, to work their way through. And also, if you remember, we talked about this in our budget workshop, we moved the major multi-year projects that were in the grant fund, we moved it over to the capital projects fund where they really need to be. And if you remember, I said the next thing we need to do is, it's, it's hard to budget a capital project using the operating budget methodology because your operating budget every June 30th, any funds that weren't spent goes back to their source of funding, goes back to the general fund or goes into the debt service fund or goes into the whatever fund. One thing I wanna do is convert, set these projects up as a capital project fund within that fund and set it up as a capital improvement program where you will see what the total cost of the project is, how much will be appropriated for that project, what the project-to-date costs are for those projects, not just within the fiscal, the current year you're in, so you can have a real understanding and be able to track the capital improvement project that the city has. Right now, you can't do that. The example being the splash pad where there's a 500,000 for the city and 500,000 for the state. So that's getting moved into next year, but if you look at the budget, it looks like we had 500,000 budget this year, 500,000 budget next year, but we never used the 500 from this year. And if we spent money this year, when you look at it next year, you're only gonna see the expenditures from within that current year. You're not seeing the expenditures for the whole capital project. So for those grants that went to multi-year projects, we moved those over into the capital fund. And like I said, we, the big things that were moved were the multimodal and the playground slash splash pad. Number five, capital projects request for fiscal '21 is 2.26 million. What is that money earmarked for? That goes back to what we just talked about. That's for the, the splash pad and the multimodal are the main, the main items in there. The revenues show, like I said, there's 646,000 that covers that, plus there's a payment in there where the city is paying back... Plus, there's a payment in there where the city is paying back the general fund for a fire truck? From, I don't know what year. So, that's what's, and as you know, we all, we went through the capital project fund during our budget workshop. Number six, under the Community and Economic Development Fund in fiscal 2019, actual legal fees were 35,029. The request for fiscal year 2021 is 15,000. On top of that, there was an item under contract services which shows $4,335 in fiscal 2019 actual and 26,000 FY21 request. Can you explain how these monies are spent? First, I just want to make a correction on the question. It says under the Economic and Community Development Fund, it's the Economic and Community Development Cost Center within the general fund. This isn't the Economic Development Fund that's further back in the book. I want to make sure I made that, that stipulation, make sure everybody followed that. The legal fees were for what the IDB uses to pay off, to pay Mark Mametoff, his expenses, to pay off the expenses we have for him and for City Attorney Litchford for the items that deal with the economic development, which isn't part of his regular stipend or contract or however we have it set up here. So that's not part of his retainer. And the good thing about all those fees are is that they are part of what we, we submit for reimbursement to the, the state for our border region dollars. So we're doing that. The contract services line he talks about for the '26, as you all know, we passed, the board approved a contract for retail strategies. And that comes out of that, that's what that line is right there for retail strategies. So those were the six questions that Dick Cook asked and hopefully I answered them to his satisfaction. If not, I'm sure he will call me tomorrow.
All right.
And that, and that is, excuse me, that is all the questions that we had for the, for the public hearing. If anybody would like a copy of the questions, I'm happy to give them, but I just read them verbatim.
All right. Counsel, any comments or questions during this public hearing? All right. I see none. I will close this public hearing. We will then move into Item C, Ordinance Number 1129.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, making and fixing the annual appropriations of the several departments of the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021.
All right. This will be second and final reading. I will entertain a motion for Ordinance Number 1129.
I make a motion to approve, ordinance 1129.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion?
No tax increase.
Exactly. Thank you. Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Helton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Ordinance 1129, pass, second and final reading. We'll move to Item D, Ordinance Number 1130.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to provide for the general revenue thereof for the fiscal year 2021 to be known as the general revenue ordinance for said year.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, basically it's called, it's the property tax ordinance. And as I just stated a few minutes ago, there is no increase in our property tax rate. So our tax rate is 1.3381 and that's the same as last year. A dollar 33, almost a dollar 34.
Awesome. I will entertain a motion for Ordinance, Ordinance Number 1130.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1130.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Chauncey. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Helton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Ordinance Number 1130, pass, second and final reading. That'll conclude old business. We'll move into Item 9, new business. Item A, Resolution 3055.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving photography bids for the 2020, 2021 sports season.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we had two bids that the city received on June 18th for the sports photography. One was from School Days Photography and one was from Life Touch National School Studios, as you see in your packet there. And the staff recommends awarding the, the bid for the 2021 athletic season to School Days Photography.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3055.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 3055.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Helton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution 3055 passed. We'll move to Item B, Resolution 3056.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor or his designated to renew the agreements with East Ridge Fastlube and East Ridge Auto Electric for fleet maintenance and repair services for the city's fleet of vehicles.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Council, last year we entered into agreements with East Ridge Fastlube for preventative maintenance, East Ridge Auto Electric for repair of police vehicles. It was for one year with the option to extend for two and we recommend that we extend the agreement.
All right. Thank you, Assistant Chief. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3056.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3056.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Helton. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do we not have a notice of renewal and extension contract for East Ridge Auto Electric? All I've got in my book is Fastlube. I just didn't have a copy of it, so.
I see.
It'll be the same, just a substitution of the name, correct?
All right. So it'll be identical except for the.
Copy of their letter where they requested to extend the contract.
Yeah, we just didn't have it in our book here, so.
Any other discussion? I see none. Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Helton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution 3056 passed. We'll move to Item C. This is the discussion for the attentive agenda for July 9th, 2020 council meeting. This attentive agenda has no old business and under new business, we have an unnumbered resolution for a request for River City Corvette Club to waive the, waive for the use of Camp Jordan Arena for Saturday, August 1st, 2020 for their annual car show, which one of their proceeds from the car show and all events that they perform is the East Ridge County Child Fund. So do we have any discussion on Item A? I see none. That concludes the attentive agenda. Is there anything else that anyone has that we'd like to add? Change or discuss? I see none. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate everyone online. Have a great evening and meeting adjourned.